This time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order for Monday, October the 10th. If you please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge. Your Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight to do the business for the county, to recognize some outstanding people that have served our community. We ask that you would give us wisdom and guidance for our meeting tonight, and we ask you for travel mercies on the way home, and it's your name that we ask this. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This time, I'll ask for approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or anything that we're...
Motion to approve as is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, we will have a short public hearing for the Mitchell's Meat Processing Building Reuse Grant. I'll call the public hearing to order. It's called to order. The public hearing is being held to receive citizen input concerning an agreement between Mitchell's Meat Processing LLC and the County of Stokes regarding the county's support of NC Department of Commerce Rural Development Division Building Reuse Grant. Mitchell's Meat Processing is eligible for $200,000 grant, for which the county would provide an additional match of 5% in the amount of $10,000 if this agreement is approved and the grant is awarded. And no one has signed up to speak, so if there are any comments from the board or anything on that, if not, then we'll close the public hearing. All right. Public hearing is closed. The next item is public comments for our regular meeting, and we have one speaker signed up, and it is Savashe Anada. You can come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Trina Doris Arby. My address is 1060 Tyler Road in Monaco. And I am a scientist, I'm doing physics, Brandon, working in health care for the past 51 years. I have some chapters on public health and what's going on in the healthcare piece. I want to bring to your attention some studies that show a dramatic increase in deaths of all causes. There are three groups that have been looking at public health and what's going on. One is the actuaries with the insurance companies. They have to keep tabs on what's happening with life and death because that's their Another group is coroners, who have to deal with bodies of deceased. And another group is the Department of Defense, which has done some research into this. And what they've been finding is, in terms of excess deaths between 2020 and 2021, a 40% increase in the increase of deaths, which is unbelievable, astounding, I don't know what to think of it. We hear about this reported on the news, that sudden adult death syndrome, SADS, sudden adult death syndrome. But when doctors have looked at this and have looked at what is in the vaccines, they are assuming, this has been proven, that the cause is the vaccines. And so, I've given you a PDF with the email to you, so that you can click on the links and watch the videos that I've seen, and I think you will be concerned as well. So please watch those videos and that PDF when you get it, and take whatever appropriate action you can to minimize this problem. So that's the only reason I came here, was to just make you aware of this. And I have to run off. I'm just waiting for you to do some things, and I need to run out. But take a look at that PDF, watch all the videos. And if you have questions, you can always call me and get in touch with me. Take a look at that and see what we can do. There are some medical doctors, a number of medical doctors, which are projecting massive increases in deaths. It's maybe 700 million, up to 2 million. So we're in trouble, and I just want to make you aware of what's going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll close the floor for public comments. No one else has signed up, and I'll move to the comments from the commissioners and our manager, starting with Commissioner Morris.
I'd just like to welcome everybody here. It's great to see all these folks here that have given so much service to the county over the years, and I'm really looking forward to having you guys recognized today. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Nicholson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, as well. It's good to see you guys here, because you gave your time here to Stokes County. It's much appreciated. I think we had some beautiful weather today, really enjoyed it, and with that, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Right. Commissioner Minogue.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming out. Anybody that's watching us on livestream, I also want to welcome them. And I also want to say, for all these people that are going to be recognized tonight for their 50 years of service, loyalty is not easy to find anymore. A lot of people will come and take a job, and then if they get offered a job with a little more pay, they're willing to jump and go to another county. For the people here that has made Stokes County your home, and you've worked here all your life, and you give service to this county, Stokes County, and I know most of you sitting back there, and I just want to say to you, I appreciate everything you have done for this county, and we're looking forward to recognizing you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Van Cess.
It's great to see each and every one of you. Now, this is a crowd that I can relate to. It's great to recognize y'all. I'm not far behind. I won't say how many years, but I'm not too many years behind y'all. But the great thing about sitting everybody in this room tonight is Stokes County should be proud of the 50 years that everybody has dedicated their life to as a volunteer. No pay for 50 years. There's not many people can sit and say that today. And as a fireman, to y'all, I commend you greatly for the 50 years y'all put in. Again, I'm not far behind you. I hope the Lord lets me reach the 50-year mark like y'all have, and thank y'all for your service.
And again, I'd like to reiterate what they said, and welcome everybody here and all those watching on livestream. And it is exciting to have the fire service recognition here tonight. And I can say firsthand, after losing my father two weeks ago tonight, and all the first responders that were there, when we, you know, needed somebody, and how important that is, I think, I feel, I've always, my son's a police officer, so I've always have had and appreciated first responders. But when you're on the receiving end of needing help and needing it quickly, you really do realize how important it is, and very thankful, and I'm very thankful to our county and our Sheriff's Department, and Brandon Gentry and his team, and everybody that did respond to my dad's accident, and really thank you from the bottom of my heart for my whole family, and welcome to our meeting. Thank you. Brandon.
Welcome to everybody here. It's nice to see all of you, a lot of faces that I know in this crowd tonight. Many of our 50-year volunteer members are from my area that I grew up in, so Lawsonville and Danbury. So it's really nice to see you all here, and like Commissioner Van Cess was saying, the volunteer part of that is huge. It's hard now in this climate to find people to work for paid jobs sometimes that we have. So the fact that you've been volunteering for 50 years, your time and dedication to help people in Stokes County is amazing, and we certainly appreciate you and commend you for that, and I'm glad that you're here this evening to be recognized for that. No, thank you.
All right. I'm going to read our conflict of interest statement. Before moving any further, does any board member have a conflict of interest with any item on the agenda for tonight, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest? Okay, all right. And I'll move to consent agenda, which are the minutes, the budget amendments, and tax office items for approval. Do I have a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now that takes us to our information agenda, which is our 50-year fire service recognition.
First off, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. It's kind of ironic, today's the beginning of the Fire Provincial Week, so it's good to be honored and exposed and kicking off Fire Provincial Week throughout the county. Organized fire protection began in Stokes County in 1955 with King Fire Department. And soon after, communities across the county began forming their own fire departments. A lot were formed by the civic clubs, Ruins, and different clubs to protect the residents of Stokes County. Through the years, many men and women have served the departments to protect life and property. Each year, at the fallen firefighter ceremony, Stokes County Fire Marshal's Office and the Stokes County Fire and Rescue Association honor these firefighters who have served their community. This year, it was a little different. Not only did we honor those who have passed away, but with the ones that have years of service as well. This year, the fire departments were asked to submit a list of still-active members who have served 25 and 50 years. We had 72 members who had 25-plus years of service volunteering in Stokes County, with the 12 that were 50-plus years of service. These members were given a challenge coin from the Fire Association and a certificate at the ceremony. 50 years of dedication, dedicated service is hard to find these days, especially when it's a volunteer. So we were very pleased to get to come tonight and present these people. We also have a plaque that is going to be commissioned and will be hanging up in our office, recognizing the members with this significant milestone and in the ones in the years to come. So tonight, I would like to honor these members with 50 years of service. Please stand when your name is called. Steven Jessup, Francisco Fire Department. Wiley Bertram, Sawertown Fire Department. Donnie May, Danbury Fire Department. James Hicks, Danbury Fire Department. McCray Green Jr., South Stokes Fire Department. Michael James, South Stokes Fire Department. Jimmy Gray Mitchell, South Stokes Fire Department. Barry Stevens, Lawsonville Fire Department. Ray Wilson, Lawsonville Fire Department. Wayne Tilly, Lawsonville Fire Department. Dennis Manuel, Pilot Rescue. Michael Kaiser, Pilot Rescue. It's been an honor to serve with these guys over the last few years that I've been with them, but I'd like to recognize these folks and give them a round of applause.
Janet, can we get a picture of all of them together for the paper?
Yes.
Unless they already took one. You already took one.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can submit it to the paper.
You know how we, school board, we always like to take pictures.
That used to make us giggle. We won't do that.
Yes, and Wayne, Wayne and Ray retired from EMS unit county.
Really?
Yep.
Thank y'all. We appreciate it. Thank y'all. All right. Be there. We won't torture y'all and make you stay.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all again.
Wiley, stay out of trouble.
All right. We're going to move on for our discussion agenda, and the first item is the Proposed Economic Development Incentive Agreement between Stokes County and Mitchell's Meat Processing.
You've got a copy of that proposed incentives agreement on your agenda that was drafted by our county attorney's office. It's a standard agreement, much like the one that you did with Dynamic a few years back, a few different details in there, because we're not sharing that with anybody else. Like, we shared with the city of King for that. So this is just between the county and Mitchell's Meat. The $10,000, of course, is contingent upon them receiving the $200,000 grant, so if that didn't happen, then you wouldn't be doing the match, obviously. Everything else in there is just typical terms and conditions of that agreement, meaning that they have to meet certain guidelines and things with that with their grant. If anybody's read over that and has any questions for myself, or for Ty, or for the Mitchells, everybody is here in attendance, so that can be answered at this meeting. And then, as we talked about at the last meeting, we did the resolution that's been given to them for their portion. They have it for their state letter. This tonight would need to be moved to action if you're in agreement, if any changes need to be made, and we could approve it at the next meeting to meet their timeline for the grant application process.
Okay. Do board members have questions?
I don't have a question, Madam Chair, but I'm going to have to, I didn't realize that this was going to be moved to action.
Next meeting.
To the next meeting, but even with discussion, after talking with our county attorney, I'm going to have to amend our agenda approval and recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question, I just have a comment that I'm really, really appreciative of the Mitchells stepping up and taking the risks they're going to take to do this business and to provide the much-needed services it will provide to the county. So I'm all for it, and moving it to action tonight.
Let me clarify. Do you want to move it tonight?
Next meeting. Technically, we did the public hearing tonight, so if you can discuss any questions, and then move it to action for next meeting, and that still meets our timeline, right? We approved it at the end of October, we're okay. That's really what we should do to...
Okay. I'm going to move it to action this time. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
It's great to see a bend in our county progressive, and I'm behind 100%.
Yep, me too. I'm glad to see it.
I got a freezer full of meat, that shows I support you.
All right. We'll have that at our next meeting for action. And the second item is the State Office of Human Resources Salary Plan Review. Jamie Clark.
Hello. Okay. So what we have submitted to you guys, each year, we have to do a state salary plan for the State Office of Human Resources for our DSS and our Public Health Department. And this year, we are not in compliance as the way our salary grades fall right now. The way that they do it is there's a spreadsheet, and it's broken down by different departments, whether it's income maintenance, social work, administrative, et cetera. And there has to be a relative differential between each pay grade for each position in that department. Right now, our relative differentials don't meet what the State Office says they need to. I've been working closely with Stacy Elms, with our DSS, and with Tammy Martin at the Health Department, to see how we can work together to get this done appropriately and fairly for all, and then make our salary grades in compliance with what the State Office says that they need to be. That's what the spreadsheet is that I've given you. It's 19 positions, or 19 position titles that this will affect. There are currently 59 employees in these positions, however, the changes will only affect 35 of these employees. The total cost is going to be $27,861.29. This will make us in compliance with what the State Office says that we will need to meet the Administrative Code of North Carolina.
Okay. You got a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, or should I have to answer it? Was this not something in the salary study today forcing that, you know, they left out, or...
We actually pointed out to them that they needed to work with the State Office to be sure that everything they were doing lined up with what was required from us, from those departments. We were assured by the group that they were doing that. When we got the letter at first from the state, we immediately reached out to the Mercer Group, and we cannot get a response at all. Their office is completely closed. I can't even find a trace of Mr. Robertson or his firm at all. I'm not sure if, I know his health was bad at one time. I know that he was pretty sick at one point. His wife said he was in the hospital. We can't get in touch with him at all, so that's kind of a mute point, I guess, at this time, because we can't get them. So they were supposed to comply all that with the state. We even gave them all the state representative's information and contact info, but obviously, by what the state is saying, they did not. And they have done several studies for other local government entities, so I can't imagine they've never had this problem before, you know, coming back with this. We were shocked that they were that off on some of these.
Well, it leaves me to next question. I hate hearing that he has some hell for him, but still, companies, a company, Ty, do they have any kind of obligation to...
Oh, yeah. They have a lot of obligations.
...that they have to pay for this, or...
The company would have an obligation.
If you can't, if they're out of business.
If the company's out of business.
And if the worst case is happening, he has passed away or something, which I'm sort of assuming at this point is the case, because we can't get any, the cell phone's off, the email just is gone. I looked it up online, found that their business has closed. So there's no communication, has not been any. We've all tried numerous times and don't get anything.
That's something that would need to be checked, as far as, you know, if there's any kind of dissolution of assets in process, I don't know. Are they a corporation?
The Mercer Group, they were an LLC, I'm pretty sure.
LLC, okay. Well, there's a formal dissolution process to go through to pay any outstanding debts or claims, so that's something that we can check on, as far as, see what's been filed, Secretary of State.
I know there's kind of open air questions. Is there any way that you could reach out to them and hopefully have an answer by next meeting, to find out what exactly was going on with the company?
I can send them a letter, and I just have to check, see what information I can get.
Okay.
I'd certainly send a letter.
Where was their office located at?
Lumberton.
Lumberton.
Carolina.
Okay. So a little drive, but...
I mean, that's where I searched and found that it had been closed down, so after I didn't get any response back by cell or by email, and Jamie tried the same, and Gail as well.
Give me what information you have on the company.
Okay. Oh, well.
Investigate that.
Yeah, because part of that agreement with them was they would, they were going to do job descriptions for us for a low cost. They were going to give us sort of the metrics to update our salary plan, like is needed coming up really soon. All those things that were encompassed in that money that we paid to them for that, and it's just gone if they're not here anymore, so...
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. I validate what Shannon said. I asked him specifically about this whenever he gave us, I think, the first or second presentation, and he said that he understood what he was supposed to do, and he would do it.
We gave him Dominic, I think it was his last... From the state office. Yeah, we gave him that contact info. Stacy did the same thing, so he said, "Oh, yeah, I've done this for lots of local governments, so I know what I have to do."
Yeah. I think it was missing when he came the first time, that's why I asked him about it.
Do we have any liability insurance depression?
That would be a good question for, maybe we can look and see. I'm not sure about them, about liability. For a salary study company, I don't know. I know we would for, like, physical, you know, things, but I'm not sure about liability for that. We can look and see. I'll make the night to look.
That being said, while we're deciding whether we can make him pay, we need to fix it.
It's got to be fixed. We don't have any... There is no option to not do it. I mean, otherwise, we're just out of compliance. Yeah. And Jamie's worked really hard and been all around the world trying to get the numbers to line up, and this is it.
How was the ARAT caught?
When we submitted our salary plan, the way that you fill out the spreadsheet, it's always electronic, and so if you're not in compliance, it highlights it red. And so then I reached out to State Office, and I'm like, "Okay, can you tell me what I'm doing wrong?"
Yeah.
And it was just the way that our grades fail.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure.
Maybe it's not a bigger number.
A quick obituary search.
I have one more question, Madam Chair. The ones that's got to go down, will they be knocked down another? Okay, so they'll stay where they're at?
No. Yeah, the way that we recommended it was, for anybody whose salary is at or above what's decreasing, we were recommending to keep them the same, because it's an ARAT, you know, not our fault, not theirs. So we're trying to keep it as fair as possible, but at the same time, become in compliance. So this was just a quick fix to get us where we need to be with the State Office, and then revisit it come budget time next year, and get where we need to be as a county and for the State Office.
So are you saying, Jamie, I'm looking at the list here, the last one, Environmental Health Supervisor, one, old pay grade 45, new pay grade 42. So for the rest of this year, are they going to get paid on what scale? I just want to hear it.
Right, yes. That salary will remain the same on the grade...
45.
45, yes.
And then we'll revisit it.
However, should something happen to him, and we have to bring in a new Environmental Health Supervisor, they will be brought in on a grade 42.
And they'll continue...
This person, if they stay with us, yeah.
And he would continue, the person in that would continue to get their longevity based on that grade that they were hired at. That person, once that position, if that person leaves, like she's saying, the next person would come in and be paid on that scale. Nobody's going to receive a decrease or be in any way, you know, it won't be a problem for them.
As it was identified.
Right, correct.
Right.
Makes sense.
Okay. And do we need to move this to action tonight?
It would be helpful.
Yes. What we have to do is, we have to submit it to the State Office for their review, and then they have to send it on to the State Office Commission for Review in December, and we want to give them plenty of time so that they can review it and then do that.
Okay. So salary plan review will be item C on action. The board's okay with that?
I'm good.
All right. Put that down. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Okay. And the next item is the sale and purchase agreement for the bank in Danbury.
So this has been worked on for a little bit, and you finally got the draft in front of you of the purchase agreement for the bank property in Danbury. As you know, the purchase price is $350,000, which is well below the actual tax value of that building, which I think falls at $411,000 for that space. Included with the purchase agreement are all the details of that, including things in there. There's a disclaimer in there stating that a bank can't be there for five years, that is in that purchase agreement, which I have informed the sellers that that's not our plan for the use of the building, which is while we're proceeding with the purchase agreement. There's also an attachment in your purchase agreement, I think it's attachment D, if I'm trying to scan down to it, that has an ATM lease that they're requesting that we go with. If we actually sign the purchase agreement and go into an agreement with them, they would like to lease the ATM facility from the county and leave what's there currently, and have a small piece of that control room access to actually do that. That ATM is a huge benefit for people in our area. If you've used it, it's a live teller. You can go down and do lots of transactions at it. We use it a lot for here, and I use it for personal use. So a lot of people, I think, benefit from having that there, so I don't really see a downside to that. Plus, they're going to pay the county to have that ATM lease there for the duration of the time that it's there, which I would assume would be forever. If you've had a chance to look over it, I'd like to have any additional comments that you have. I also informed our Board of Elections Director, Jason Perry, who is here, and do inform his board about, you know, the tentative plan for that building would be to make it our new Board of Elections office. We, in the budget, had talked about doing the Board of Elections office and building a new structure at the top of the hill near the helipad, which was going to cost a little more, possibly more than this. Also, being that it was in that location, would work, but not quite as public accessibility as the bank property is. The bank property is just right off of Highway 8, as you know. People know where that's at. It's designed well already, it's handicap accessible, has a good amount of space. We think if we work with, you know, an architect-engineer firm and get the bank at that price for $350, for a relative reasonable amount of money, we might even be able to turn some of the drive-through lanes into a storage area for them, possibly, if they need more. more, possibly more than this. Also, being that it was in that location, would work, but not quite as public accessibility as the bank property is. The bank property is just right off of Highway Eight, as you know. People know where that's at. It's designed well already, it's handicap accessible, has a good amount of space. We think if we work with, you know, an architect engineer firm and get the bank at that price for three-fifty, for a relative reasonable amount of money, we might even be able to turn some of the drive-through lanes into a storage area for them, possibly, if they need more storage than is inside the bank. The vault area is pretty large and secure for things like voting machines, possibly, that would be as secure as they've probably ever been in Stokes County stored that way. So it seems like a good plan to me. I would like to know if Jason's got anything he'd like to add this evening, if you've talked to your board, or anything, or anything that you'd like to discuss, or questions, or concerns, or comments, if you've got anything also, and if our board has any questions about that, too.
I think Shannon pretty well covered my points. I think the only possible concern I had was the square footage. I think the building that we were looking at building was about thirty-five-hundred square feet, and this one is more about twenty-two-hundred square feet. So I guess where I'm at personally right now, and I'll speak for my board, I guess, would like to get in there and look at it and kind of proceed from there. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think with, I think some of what we were talking about with that larger space was a lot of storage area, too. I think we could make that happen with the space that you have. It's such, it's such a nice building where it's at, where it's located. A lot better for you all, for your public to enter and out of.
Like you said, the vault, the accessibility, the parking, things like that.
Yeah, they're huge, huge areas.
There is a division of Homeland Security that also is doing security assessments for elections offices, county offices. I haven't had one where we're at right now because, one, we're about to move, and, two, it's pretty secure right now, I think, so having to come through the top floor and things like that. So, but that would be, you know, being more accessible to the public is obviously a big positive, but would also want to take into account maybe some security procedures as a part of that, too.
Go ahead.
Just thirty-five-hundred is what you were thinking, but this is twenty-two-hundred.
What are you in right now? What's your square footage right now?
Well, I just want to head it, you know, with what you're in right now. Been in there many times. Do you know what square footage of your office is right now?
I think it's less than twenty-two-hundred right now.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's quite.
Although, we have been using courtroom C for some different functions, but that's not part of our office, but we have been using it. But I think it is a little bit lower, below twenty-two-hundred right now.
Well, I mean, the first thing that comes to my mind is you're getting an increased space area then, more than likely.
Right.
This building is larger than where you're at now.
Right.
And we're saving. I remember this very well. We allotted six-hundred-thousand dollars for the new Board of Elections building.
May or may not have covered the cost with what we're seeing from someone.
With materials going up and everything, it might have been seven-hundred-thousand. Could have been a quarter of a million. We allotted six-hundred-thousand dollars. We're getting this building for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
Yep.
We're saving the county two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars with this building. And Jason then will be having a bigger space also.
Right.
I just don't see how we go wrong with this.
Yeah, it's a nice building, too.
Any other questions?
Just comments, I think's a really good idea by this thing at this price. I'm really surprised we got it for that, but I'm glad we did. And as Ronnie was saying, we've got a bunch more budget in it that we can use to do some renovations for additional storage and stuff. I'd be open to doing that. Then we get to keep the banking services there, so it, to me, it's a win-win for everybody.
Right.
And a big cost avoidance in our budget when it's all said and done, most likely, so.
Yes.
I fully support it.
And this is yours, this is the county property as well, too?
Yeah, it does. It sure does, that's right.
And you're getting paid lease for the ATM.
Right, we're making, we're making some of those money back.
Thirty-five-hundred dollars a year, so.
Positive. We can work out going down there. We, I've just, we've just gotten this deal done. Possibly after, I'll talk with the broker company and see if we can't just get a time we can go in there and let you and your board go in and look.
It's not bad right there.
Do you have any other questions or comments? We'll get you in there to look at it, so. Yeah, thank you. All right.
I have, I have one thing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that the contract, the effective date will be when the bank signs it. So we will sign and then send it. They ask us to sign it first, and they will sign it when they get it. And that, that's the effective date of the contract. And then we have a thirty-day due diligence period after that, in which to check everything out. And if for any reason we decided that we wouldn't be able to use it, then we can terminate.
Okay. Do we need to move this to action tonight?
I would appreciate it. You know, this has been a lot of slow process, so I would really like to.
That'll speed things up.
Yeah, I would speed that up a little bit.
All right, we'll put item D. All right, and we're going to move on to our proposals, the RFPs, needs assessment, feasibility study, and the market analysis that we have given, and Glenda's coming up.
I hope you've all had a chance to skim over, look over, read in depth your proposals that were submitted. Shannon and I have took a lot of time to review them and look through them and.
Separately.
Separately. But we have come to the same conclusion, which we were very impressed with each other. We, as you know, Shannon had a wedding to attend, and I was in the garage, so we didn't see each other for a couple of weeks. So we finally got together, and we had chosen the top, we chose our top two, and we were both right on time. So we would like to recommend the top two that we feel would be the most beneficial to us would be the HFG Group, which is the Health Facilities Group. In your binders, it's the blue tab. And our second choice would be the Forbes Group, and it's your red tab. We just felt that the HFG Group, they pretty much specialize in healthcare. They had done critical access, they had done rural health, they had done USDA loans. So just looking, the other companies were good companies also, but these were just the two that stood out the most to us because.
And they have, I think it's sixty, sixty-plus critical access hospital clients.
Yes.
They've done over twenty-two replacement hospital, you know, studies and experiences. They've done tons of USDA-funded projects. So out of all the, all the ones that, there were some, you know, decent proposals, but this one really stands out. And this gentleman actually came to the site visit for the hospital and was very knowledgeable. He could just, I mean, he asked lots of good questions, had lots of good information. Really knows what he's doing, you can tell. And compared to the others, if you've had time to look at them, it's, to me, it'd be my only, it'd be my choice to go with.
And we were both in agreeance there. Their timeline for completion was three to four months, which was, to me, right on prompt, I mean, to be able to provide a good product at the end. Their cost was in line, kind of what we were thinking, and compared to the proposals, it definitely was not the most, but it definitely wasn't the least. So it was kind of in that middle range that we were all kind of thinking. So I'm open to, if any of y'all have any questions that you would like me to submit to anyone, if you all want to weigh in on kind of your thoughts, I'm open to, I kind of put out to the people that have asked. I told them we were doing a discussion tonight, and then we would possibly, we would hope to make a decision by our last meeting in October. So I'm open to you all, however you all feel.
The Forbes Group, remind me, that was the Georgia, based out of Georgia, or South Greenville, South Carolina?
Yes, the Georgia. The HFG Group is based out of Kansas.
All right. We'll start down here with Rick.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have read them all in depth, a couple of times, actually, and I came to the exact same conclusion that you ladies did, that they've got the most realistic price. They were one of the two companies, like Shannon said, that did come and make a site visit. I talked to the gentleman while I was here specifically about USDA, and was impressed with his knowledge of how that process works. And so I think you guys, they're pretty clearly ahead of all the rest of them when you look at price and services and background and everything, so I would concur with your recommendation.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Myself, looking through them, there were a few that I Xed out right away that seemed to just be more on the architectural side of things and the planning of building, not so much a needs assessment, which is what we were really looking for. And I think one of them had several subcontractors that they would be working with, so I wasn't interested in that. So the two you mentioned were two of the four that I hadn't Xed out yet. So they were, they were still in consideration, so. You know, I don't know if the, being in Kansas is going to be, I know so much stuff is done virtually these days. I don't know that it matters if they're that far away, especially as much as it used to matter. But the fact that he's already made a trip out here once to look at everything is encouraging, so. And their timeline was a little longer. I think the Forbes Groups was eight weeks, which I don't know that that's very realistic.
I think that's more past the ninety-one, twenty days.
Theirs was actually around three months. They said that they went started in October, which, to me, that kind of depended upon what we chose, whether they would actually, but their final report was December. They didn't really say if it was the first of December or the very last day.
Yeah, exactly.
So it counted, you know, it counted both ways.
So probably eight to weeks to twelve weeks, or somewhere in there. But, so, yeah, I think, you know, I think what, maybe what we need to do is look at those two specific ones before the next meeting and try to pick one of those, unless people have strong opinions on another one of these.
Good with that. The thing, he did come for the site visit. It wasn't just a short site visit. He stayed about eight hours, went to King, went from one end to the other of all the buildings, facilities, and took a very serious look at it. So both of them did, both of the two site visit guys.
And he asked a lot of questions that you kind of, it made you feel like that he kind of knew his background, like the questions that he asked were, were things related to what we were looking for. So it kind of made you feel like we kind of knew what he was talking about. What, just the salesperson?
Were those, both of those made site visits or just?
No, just the.
Did the other one that made a site visit make a proposal?
He did.
Yeah, he did, but we didn't choose it.
The very last one in your head.
Okay.
Well, he's from Charlotte.
Okay, okay, I got you. All right.
The very last one.
I don't know which one that was. I got Xed, but.
There was not, there's not a dollar amount on that proposal.
It was hourly rates, right?
Yeah, it wasn't. That's true. Okay. Well, let's put it on action for the next meeting, and we'll have these two, and we'll have some discussion on these two and pick one next time.
Sounds good.
If I chance, when you're diving into those two specifically, if you have any questions, if you will let me know kind of by the eighteenth, that kind of gives me time to get the question to them and get an answer back before that's the next meeting.
All right, that's a good idea.
When you're looking at it, if you kind of see something that you want more detailed on, just let me know, and I'll be glad to reach out. Everyone that has submitted a proposal has been very open to if we have any questions. But that kind of gives us a little bit of time to get them the question, then get us an answer back to us.
All right, okay, I agree with that. Is it a pleasure to the board that she can let the others know that they weren't selected or that we've narrowed down? Or you think it's just wait till the, we take action?
I think we need to wait.
Wait till twenty.
Take action, okay. All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Right along. Next item is our action agenda and the resolution for overpayment of the excise stamp tax. Any questions about that?
Make a motion to approve.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the JCPC appointment request, and we had asked for a little more information, which she emailed us that earlier today, of these appointees to the JCPC. Carlos Doggett is over the Youth Haven program at King Elementary, the behavioral program for kids, which I think that is a, that's a good person, I think, to be on JCPC. And then the student representatives, sounds very knowledgeable, too, so I'll open the floor for any further nominations.
Make a motion to close.
Aye.
All right. And I will poll the board on Doggett and Robertson.
I just want to ask a question before we poll, if I could, Madam Chair. You're on the committee, right?
Yes.
Are there a lot of other people on there that are sort of like the Doggett, is that his name?
There are some other, like, people that receive money. Youth Haven doesn't receive any funding from JCPC, but like Insight, and there are two more. State Friends of Youth, and there just seems like there's another one that does receive funding. So there's similar types of people.
I just wondered if the younger person, a college person that's still in college, if that would give a different dimension than what was already in there.
Definitely that would. There's not anybody really that young on there that could.
I'm kind of inclined to go that direct. I think both of them would be fine, but just to have more.
It's two, it's both.
Two positions.
Or three positions.
Yes, there's two.
Sorry about that.
Well, I'm good with both of them.
Okay, yeah, both of them, sorry.
All right, I had all that long discussion.
Lady, she's sharp, she's sharp. I know her.
Okay.
So we've got Doggett and Robertson, both. I should have said both. That helped.
Robertson's for the student appointee, one in, and Doggett's for the VOT.
Okay, I was just confused on that.
Okay. Both?
Oh, for those two, yeah.
Doggett, Robertson.
Doggett, Robertson.
Doggett, Robertson.
Doggett and Robertson, all right. We got that. All right, this, item C is the State Office of Salary Review Plan. Need a motion to approve.
To approve the plan that was presented to us tonight.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item D is the purchase of the Danbury, the bank in Danbury.
I should approve, aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll need the rationale for going into closed session.
To consider the initial employment or appointment of an individual to any office or position other than a vacancy in the Board of County Commissioners, or any other public body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and body, or to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of any particular officer or employee, other than a member of the Board of Commissioners, or of some other public body pursuant to General Statute 143-318, that 1186.
Okay.
I'm going to close this.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, we're back in open session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reclassify vehicle maintenance mechanic from grade 30 and a supervisor to a grade 37 with a salary of $45,881.46.
One thing I did forget to mention on that is can we say effective in this pay period? That way I have an effective date.
Effective this pay period.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
adjourned.
Adjourned.
All those in favor? They're adjourned.